Please come running up here to tell me no.
You need me to say how now, brown cow?
There you go.
Can I say how now, brown cow?
Hi there, everybody.
Hey. Be remembering myself now. About the oil cows up low.
Recording in progress.
We'll give a moment for Councilmember Oro to return. Okay, well done. Stay. Call the regular city council meeting to order for February fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. We are working from the amended agenda. Remember, it's noted on the front page of the agenda itself. Has the flag for the pledge allegiance, please? Is my joint move for the pledge allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Being announced on this note to AB three sixty-one, this meeting will be held entirely virtually. All methods available for public participation are detailed on the front page of the agenda. Roll call, please.
Mayor Leon Garcia?
Here.
Vice Mayor Miriam Abadamas?
Here.
Councilmember Mark Joseph? Mark, Mark, you're muted.
Now I am, but I wasn't muted when I said I was here, or I didn't think I was muted.
I'm sorry, I did not hear you.
Oh, okay, I'm here.
Great. Councilmember David Oro?
Here.
And Councilmember Pierre Washington?
Here.
Thank you.
Hi. Welcome to report on close session confirmation reportable action. Mr. Ross?
Mayor and council members of the public, your council convened an open session at five thirty-three P M to address the matters' agendas for closed session consideration. After determining there were no public comments on the matters' agendas closed session, you adjourned to closed session. You concluded your closed session at six twenty-nine P M. I will do a written report upon return from closed session, consistent with the provisions of Government Code Section fifty-four nine fifty-seven point one, with the exception that with respect to closed session item two B, will indicate that there was unanimous action of the council to authorize payment to the law firm of Rutan and Tucker in the amount of sixty-one thousand, six hundred dollars and seventy-nine cents for the litigation reference in which the city received a four hundred and twenty-two thousand, five hundred dollar settlement. That would conclude the report unless there are questions.
Any questions from council? Seeing that hearing on, thank you, Mr. Ross. We'll move on with our agenda this evening. Proclamations and presentations are not this evening. Public comments, items not on the agenda, if we received any.
We have Mayor Garcia. I have, let me see here. We've written comments, we received written comments for items not on the agenda from Chris James, Russell Mulder, Michelle Lighty, Rose Maldonado, Rose Negrete, and Tammy James.
Raise hands.
I have, I have some requests to speak in advance, so I'm going to take those first. I have Humberto Rodriguez. Let me see. Yes. Humberto, go ahead.
Hello, good afternoon.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Humberto Rodriguez. I have lived in American Canyon for ten years. I'm a homeowner and live in the Vintage Ranch neighborhood with my wife and two kids. The neighborhood has always been clean and free of problems. We actually, we love living here. Unfortunately, after the village apartments opened in the neighborhood, various problems have plagued the neighborhood. One of those problems is the overload of vehicles that are on the streets. Some of the ongoing issues that the homeowners face on a daily basis include the driveways getting blocked. On garbage day, there's no space for garbage bins. Partly cars block the view of oncoming traffic. Cars get abandoned for days and weeks, and it's sometimes a hassle to report those to the A C P D. Fire hydrants get blocked. And lastly, our friends and family have no place to park. Some of the streets that are being affected includes Ascana Drive, Stone Creek Drive, and Silver Oak Trail. I have reached out to several council members in hopes of finding a solution for everyone, and so far, we haven't found one. I understand that the streets are public, but I think we can come to a resolution that can benefit the homeowners and the residents that live at the vintage apartments. I think the easiest solution and the most simplest one would be to discourage the village apartments and their management from charging their tenants a fee of a hundred and fifty dollars a month so that they can pay for the reserved parking spaces. The reserved parking area is oftentimes empty because the residents cannot afford to pay a hundred and fifty dollars to park their third or fourth vehicle that they might have. The second option is the more complex one, which would be to designate the previously mentioned streets with special parking permits. This system is in place in the city of Napa, near the vintage high school. Practically, each household gets two permits, which enable them to park their vehicles on the street. Every vehicle that doesn't have a permit can be fined or towed. I have obtained the signature of approximately fifteen homeowners in the neighborhood that are in favor of the latter option. I do believe that we can find a solution to the issue once again that can bring back some peace and tranquility to the neighborhood. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Information to Mr. Holly.
Okay, next up, I have Rose Negrete. Rose, I don't see your name on the list on Zoom. I have you as a pre-registered. And we're gonna skip over her. She did pre-register, but I don't see her here. So next on my pre-register is Tammy Wong. I'm gonna call Tammy. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Evening, welcome.
Thank you. Teresa, just really quick, Rose had to dial in by phone. She wasn't able to get on via Zoom. So I'm not sure how you can find her, but she is dialed into the meeting. Should I go ahead with my comment, or do you want to try and find her?
Go ahead, and we'll, I'll have someone look on the back end.
Okay, so anyways, Mayor and Council, I want to reiterate my written thanks about how we can help our community cats and give support to Councilmember Washington's suggestion to form an ad hoc committee. I hope that can be accomplished today, and I offer my services to assist our community. I'm also here to express my concern about recent high-speed chases or high-speed police pursuits on our neighborhood streets. Unless there is an immediate threat to someone's life, this seems to me an unnecessary and risky response for a property crime. I would like more information about our city or county's use of high-speed pursuits, whether the individual officer makes the decision, or if there is any oversight procedure in process. I would also like to know how much liability insurance coverage we have as a city should an accident occur. I believe the last high-speed pursuit resulted in a car crash in a neighborhood. Thankfully, it was a parked car and no one was injured. However, in the January twenty-eighth pursuit, which was on the highway, I believe the suspect lost control and died in a car crash over a stolen car. Even if our officers have training for high-speed pursuits, the suspects do not. How do we balance the risk from high-speed pursuits while keeping our community safe? I look to our elected leaders and our police chief to give us more information and transparency, please. Thank you.
Okay, I do not have Rose as a dial-in or by name here, so I'm going to move on to our hands raised, and the next one is going to be Justin Hamilton Hole. Go ahead, Justin.
Thank you, Teresa. My name is, my name is Justin. I've been here, this is my thirty-one year as the American. And I wanted to shout out our C U police, C U department and eminent to save our city. I am so proud that there's like, like issue a third day. But I wanted to say, thank you, our C U police doing that. I know Pierre, Pierre Washington on our call. I wanted this, I just want to just pray that we meet a new sidewalk, was it Karen Dunbar? That we had no sidewalk over there, so I would just want to pray that. Thank you, here.
Thank you. Okay, next up, I have Chris James. Go ahead, Chris.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can, go ahead.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. Some of you may have seen my public comment that I sent in only today, and I understand that you can't address this tonight, but I would like you to hopefully have the police chief address this at some point in the future. My, I am very concerned about the number of high-speed pursuits that seem to be happening in our city. Maybe they, they've always been happening, but only now they're getting more reported and more visible either through social media or the outreach that the police chief does and is, is some of his reports he's been sending out. I'm sure what I'm gonna say is, Tammy's already said this, but I think it's worth repeating that I am concerned. The last crash was right next to the middle school and elementary school late afternoon, near two public parks. I'm sure there was kids present or nearby, either heading home from school or going to other activities. I actually, today, I took some time to review the standard operating manual for the Napa Sheriff Department, and I do understand that they, they do have rules governing these pursuits, one of which is not to do this sort of thing in the middle of the day in, in, when people are around, so I am concerned about this and how, you know, it seems to be more prevalent these days. And I understand the officers are trained, well-trained, and hopefully they will train, but the people that chasing aren't trained. I saw the video of this crash. Someone caught it on their, their wing. It crashed in the car. The car actually left the ground and crashed in. The woman, the woman was actually coming back from some groceries, and I'm sure it was from that car, but was seconds earlier, she was out on the curb with some groceries, so it's, it could have been a lot worse, and and I understand a lot of these, these pursuits are resulting from property thefts, car thefts, burglars and stuff like that, but you know, it's, I mean, I'm concerned about the liability to, and the safety issue in the city as well. And as Tammy mentioned, there was another pursuit starting, originating in American Canyon where someone did die on the January twenty-eighth of a red cop, but it did start in the city, and maybe if they backed off, that guy would be alive today.
You're at time.
Yeah, and that's it. That was my last comment, but take a look at my email. I had cut and paste some of the comments from the standard operating manual into that thing, and hopefully we can come back and address this.
Okay, I have Rose Maldonado. Go ahead, Rose. You're muted.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can, go ahead.
Great. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I appreciate your time this evening. I have lived in the city of American Canyon for over ten years now. I previously submitted a comment regarding the community cat situation in the city, and again, I added a comment in tonight's agenda. I would like to express my support to proceed with, you know, Councilmember Washington's suggestion to create an ad hoc committee to explore solutions together. As an animal lover, you know, I really truly care about the animals. I truly believe that together we can collaborate to help stabilize the population humanely, improve the cats' lives, really address neighbors' concerns, and help the entire community reach a solution that benefits everyone. I hope that you're, you will support this committee that we would like to form, this ad hoc committee. Your support would be very much appreciated. I would also like to be considered to be in the committee if that is something that you would allow. And that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Beth Marcus. Go ahead, Beth.
Good evening. I just want to say that I think that Humberto's concern with street parking is very timely, being that the residents of American Canyon on Melvin Road is going to be facing with the exact same thing with the Napico project that is going to be built. I do want to thank Brent, Mr. Ross, and other people who did meet with some of us residents to help resolve some of these issues, but I just think it was timely that Humberto brought that up.
Thank you, Beth. Beth, do you have anything else for us?
No.
Okay, thank you. I have one more. I have Russell. Russell, go ahead.
Hi, Mayor and council members. My name is Russell Mulder, and I live in the Waterton area of American Canyon. I support the city and everything they do. I'm having the concerns right now about Governor Newsom opening the agenda of creating tiny houses in the backyards, turning homes into small apartment complexes. I don't know what this, how the city sits on that, but it's happening in our neighborhood at this point in time. I've tried to contact the code enforcement to see, you know, where actually American Canyon stands. I don't know if you'd like someone building tiny homes or renting out their whole house and for different people, not just family members, but creating like a whole apartment complex next door to your house, but I'd like to put this on some kind of agenda in the future to find out is this what we want to do with our community in American Canyon? Do we want to open it up to this kind of, I don't know if we want to call it invasion, but, you know, people turning their homes into not just family residents? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. I have one more comment. Karen? Karen, go ahead. Could I get your last name, please?
Fritz.
Karen Fritz. Thank you. Go right ahead.
I'd like to ditto on the last comment made by Russell. We've been noticing a lot of changes going on in one of the homes that was recently purchased in our neighborhood, and we certainly don't want it to look like a parking lot in front of each and each home that's on our street. Everyone is a proud homeowner who, many of us are original homeowners. In fact, we're here in the Waterton area. And all of a sudden, we're dealing with someone coming in, and if you view the posting that they have listed on the website for rent, they have two options. And one of them states, in fact, that they will rent each room for a certain amount of money as well as they are doing some construction over there that is very unsettling. It's like, how can that be? We paid prime prices for these homes, and trust me, I was looking at this to be my retirement home, but I'm not so sure that's gonna be the future for us due to the fact that this type of stuff is going on in our neighborhood. Anyway, it is something that I would like the council and the city to seriously take a look at and evaluate that for long-term residents who have been here for some, for sixty-plus years. Anyway, I think that's about it. Not happy, but hopefully somebody can take a look into this and make a very wise decision as to how this should be handled. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Holly, could you look into this in terms of compliance?
Yeah, we'll reach out to Mr. Fritz related to the constructions you're talking about.
Okay, I have no other hands raised, Mayor Garcia.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Garcia, before we proceed, I do want to just, I think I see Mr. Rodriguez still on the line. He's one of our first speakers. I have not heard from him. If he could reach out to me, that would be great as well. Just find my information on the city website. Would love to touch base with him.
I would echo that statement. I haven't heard from him, but I would love to talk to him as well.
Jason, I think you might have a little bit of an update on the parking situation at Village, Village Advantage Ranch, because I have talked to Mr. Rodriguez via email, and I've provided him updates as they've come along, but we're definitely still having issues there.
Yeah, at the moment, I'm trying to get in touch with the apartment owners there, Village Advantage Ranch, to really understand if the allegation of charging for parking is accurate. That's the first piece from tonight. I have not myself talked to Mr. Rodriguez, but you know, as it relates to the on-street parking, we have done some adjustments on the painting around fire hydrants in particular. There is a de facto thirty-foot essentially no parking zone around the hydrants. We've done some some red curbing around those hydrants so that people are aware of that. You know, other than that, we've been looking at some ideas around striping and some traffic calming around, particularly on Silver Oak, not on the other streets like Tuscana. So we have, have talked with Director Smithies about some ideas. We're looking at just traffic calming on Silver Oak.
So anybody who wants to discuss, all the council members are available to be contacted regarding some issues, so appreciate. Hey. Are there no other callers or hands raised for public comment? Next time, is agenda changes? Are there any agenda changes, council? I'll accept a motion for the consent calendar.
So moved. I'll second.
Motion second. Roll call, please.
I'm sorry, who, second, was it Councilmember Joseph?
I was too slow. It was Councilmember Washington.
If I'm not looking up there sometimes, it's all the difference. Okay. Second, and here we go with our vote. Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Councilmember Oro?
Yes.
Councilmember Joseph?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Abadamas?
Yes.
And Mayor Garcia.
Yes, thank you. Hearing there, no public hearing this evening. Next one, our business items. I have sixteen, senior multi-use center. Name check.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This item, we're gonna be bringing over both Alexandra as well as Alana to give a presentation about this idea for some renaming and some rebranding of our what we hope to be former senior center into more of an active adult center, and without stealing too much of their thunder, you know, this is a trend that we're seeing nationwide, and we think it'll be a benefit for all users of the facility. And so Teresa's gonna move over Alana and Ally right now to take it away.
Thank you, Jason. Sorry, I was trying to mute myself. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Parks Recreation Staff has done a lot of work, and we are recommending this evening that you adopt, that we adopt a resolution renaming the Senior Multi-Use Center to the Adult Activity Center. On the call, on the meeting this evening, we have Alana Ben, our Recreation Supervisor, who has all the information, and she'll go ahead and share why we're making this recommendation. And we also have two community members attending, Kristen Einberger and Fran Lemos, who is on the call, who would also like to say a few words as to why we're making this recommendation. Alana, would you like to take it away?
Thank you, Ally. So as you know, since May of two thousand and ten, our American Canyon Senior Multi-Use Center has served our active adult community by providing programs, services, resources, with our overall mission of building a sense of place for our older adults in our community. American Canyon strives to be relevant and connect with our community. Staff has been aware that members of the community feel disconnected from our program offerings at the Senior Multi-Use Center because of the word senior. This is something that is not unique to American Canyon. This is nationwide, where traditional senior centers are changing their name away and removing senior from their programmings and their facilities to better connect with all adults for their community. A lot of our baby boomers don't really connect with the name senior. They associate that with a nursing home, and that's definitely not what our center is. So we want to change the name to be able to connect better with our community. Since two thousand and nineteen, the Parks and Rec staff has been working with a senior steering committee, surveying our program participants, asking our community members, our instructors, and we recommend the name change from Senior Multi-Use Center to the Adult Activity Center. This would allow us to better connect and engage with all adults in American Canyon, boost participation, enrollment, and create a better sense of place for our community members. In addition to new signage for the building, if this gets adopted, we would also be pushing for a rebranding effort to help create awareness and excitement for the new name and the new program offerings to really reach out to all of, all of the adults in our community. And this fits under the county or the council's priority of community and sense of place. We truly want to build a sense of place for all of our adults in our community, and this fits right in line with that. The fiscal impact associated with this, the Parks and Rec Department applied and was awarded a five thousand dollar grant from the Solano County Foundation and the United Way Health Endowment Fund, where we identified the need of changing and getting rid of senior and adopting more programming geared towards our active adults. So we are looking at using half of that to go to our facility signage and installing that signage, and then the other half going into the programs that would be associated with that. And I think that's it, kind of short, sweet to the point. If you guys have any questions, I don't know if we want to do questions now, if we want to hear from our other two people from the community about their input.
Thanks for the report. You know, this is all to reassess, reevaluate from time to time how our services are reaching the community and what the uncertainties are. So I appreciate that. Any questions or comments at this point from council? What do we hear from the other folks who joined us this evening? Hello? Hello?
Is that it, Ben? Oh, okay. I just had a quick question. I like the name change, but I just had a quick question. There's a room that you guys had that we would use for various meetings. Is that room still going to be available if we ever can have meetings again? Is that the room I'm talking about?
Yes, the small computer room. So we are in our transitional phase of reopening the senior center. So that is our next step in building, building a program and having more space that we can utilize. So we are working towards using that room. Right now, the senior center is open for programs only and we do use that bigger room to encourage kind of social distancing and where we are with COVID today. But it is in our plan to expand fully the senior center and be able to use that room again.
Great, thank you, Alana.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Ben?
Mayor, just a quick point of order. I don't think we've opened public comment. I think we're waiting for Teresa to transfer Kristen and Fran over.
I think these were, as I understand the order, it was even, these were two individuals wanting to be part of this presentation. Is that it? Or are they probably comment? Which is it?
Part of the presentation, I believe.
Yes.
Okay, I misunderstood. I thought they were commenting. So let me bring, well, Fran, I have Fran in the audience. Who was the other person?
Just a presentation, is this public comment?
No, this is the presentation.
Oh, the presentation, thank you, okay.
Kristen, is it Einberger?
Yes.
Okay, Kristen?
There she is.
Is over and Fran is there and she, I don't know.
She's muted.
Fran, you're muted.
You're taking Kristen?
Now am I muted? Yep, you're both, so they're both available to.
Both available, okay, very good.
Okay, hello. So my name's Kristen Einberger.
You're muted now.
Kristen, you're muted.
Is this okay now?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Just don't touch anything.
So my name's Kristen Einberger. I'm the co-president of Seraphimus International here in American Canyon. I've lived in American Canyon for nearly twenty wonderful years. So I'm here to ask that you support the name change of what is now known as the, or what we refer to as the American Canyon Senior Center. I'm a senior myself and have been involved with senior center planning and reorganizing for four years now. Excuse me, and during that entire time, I've certainly advocated for a name change. So the modern-day senior center tracks its roots back to the 1940s, the time when life expectancy was seventy. Today, of course, it's eighty. A lot has changed during this. Today, a senior center really needs to cater to a much wider age range of people, anywhere from fifty to a hundred years old, a span of fifty years. Our programming needs to be more diverse and certainly more inclusive. Our marketing strategies need to expand to get the attention and participation of middle-aged adults as they become older, as well as keeping older adults vibrant and involved with the entire American Canyon community. In order to do all these things, I firmly believe we need to change the name of the center to lose the name, to lose the word senior. I think using this word inhibits our ability to attract the broad range of people of adults from fifty to a hundred needed to maintain vitality and diversity. Really, whether we agree or not, the term senior does often denote ageism and frailty. Ageism is unfortunately alive and well, or I guess not so well, but alive. Our society is generally youth-centric and there's often a perception that seniors are less able to contribute. There's even research from the National Institute on Health that says that when people start to internalize these ageist attitudes, it can affect their health. Rather than embracing aging and seeing the opportunities, they buy into the limitations. By taking away the word senior from our center and changing it to Adult Activity Center, I think the name would become more reflective of our community and our citizens. I think fifty-year-olds as well as ninety-year-olds would see themselves in there and would want to be part of such a center. It's this inclusivity that is so very, very important to making our center one in which anyone fifty and older would be proud to participate. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Fran?
Fran, go ahead.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, go ahead.
Okay, I would just like to say, growing up in Vallejo, when I first was a young bride, I always went to Florence Douglas Center. We had activities, we had, we played volleyball tennis, we had exercise classes, and there was no age group. There was older people mingling with the younger people. And I think, I like the idea of an activity center because that tells you there's all kinds of things going on there that will interest everybody. But I would like to say one thing. I hope that some of the activities you have are free. I think it's nice to be able to go someplace not everybody can afford. And if you have a class that's, you're interested, and I know I took a couple of cooking class, that girl was so good and it was free. And of course, you have to have some that they charge because you have to pay the instructor and that type thing. But I think our community is growing so much and the activity center is someplace that we can all go and do something that we enjoy. So I'd like to see the name change. And hopefully, we'll be back to the center again soon with this not wearing a mask. So anyway, thank you, City Council. I do agree with the name change. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Other speakers, partners, presenters? If we have only our presentation computer, then I think we have council comments. This council wants to take public comment first.
I think public comment first.
Yep. There you go, objection, public comment is something on this side.
I have no other hands raised at this time.
Okay, no, no, plus public comment, return to council for, this is a discussion, comments. Councilmember Washington, did you see your?
Just real quick, I thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really enjoyed the senior center, soon to be Adult Activity Center. I enjoyed it pre-COVID. I would meet with them from time to time and see Joan Bennett there on Fridays playing Pinochle. And by all means, they are not, you know, the little frail people playing inside. They play pretty aggressive. And so some of the adults in American Canyon would really enjoy going out there and getting away from that perception of what it's held to be just for senior citizens. They are very active in there. So I think that's a very appropriate name for a name change. So like Christine and like Fran was just mentioning, you know, I just hope that we can put a few more dollars into it to increase some of the activities that go on inside there. And I'd be more than willing to be participating in some of that stuff. I'll bring Councilman Joseph along with me so we could, we could back each other up inside. It could be pretty aggressive inside there with my people inside, so looking forward to it, looking forward.
Oops. Mr. Mayor, I think you muted yourself.
I think I did.
Okay.
Councilmember Joseph?
Well, first of all, I look forward to teaming up with Councilmember Washington and playing some Pinochle and going from there. And I certainly do support the idea of changing the name. And apparently, I will consider myself young at heart so that I don't have any kind of senior issues. And lastly, on a more serious note, I do appreciate the fact that staff went out and actually hustled a grant to cover the cost of the signage and marketing. So, you know, it doesn't get any better than this as far as I'm concerned. So I'm happy to support it.
Okay. Councilmember Hall?
Yeah, I'm super supportive of this, especially since this is the year I hit that half-century mark. And there's no way I'm a senior, but I'm an adult. So, you know, I was really surprised when I saw this, pleasantly surprised, I should say. You know, because we're changing the names of a lot of things in the U.S. They used to go to Kentucky Fried Chicken and now we go to KFC. And so now we can go to the Adult Activity Center. Glad for the speakers to do this and I too would like to see that come back to life because it was, it was an active place before the pandemic started. So unless there's other council comments or public comments?
I got my comment.
All right, go ahead.
You want to make a motion, but I'll finish it up first. Yeah, I've attended a lot of events there, well, the senior center, it was actually, there was a moment to reutilize that building, was for a while served in City Hall. And it was the opening of the building here on the highway here. But then repurpose it. But it's had a lot of, I appreciate, you know, there's a lot of activities we could do there. Think you can expand on that as well. You know, some of it is, well, there's certainly an aspect of denial works for a lot of us when it comes to aging. And I think, well, I think it's included adults, just the name of it, the activity is not limited. And I think it'd be more creative opportunity there to find some repurpose that. Draw new folks in. And I think there's, certainly there's the, no, and the things that we could be doing. So I appreciate it. We had no public comment on this, so thanks, sir. I think Councilmember Hall, you were on a.
Yeah, so I'll make a motion.
Make a motion, yep.
That Resolution Number 2020, next in order, Resolution of the City Council of the City of American Canyon, renaming of the city's Senior Multi-Use Center to the Adult Activity Center.
And I'll second that. Very good, motion roll call.
Okay, I have Councilmember Joseph?
Yes.
Councilmember Oro?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Thank you, Alana and Alex, and I have a yes.
Vice Mayor Abadamos?
Yes.
And Mayor Garcia.
Yes, and I appreciate the design, that's still be out there. So, yes, very good work, thank you.
Great job, guys, thank you.
All right, we're moving on in our agenda. Our mid-year budget adjustment for fiscal year 2021, '22.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and as Teresa brings on Finance Director Lincoln Bogart to set the stage for this, it's a routine item we do each year. The city's budget is adopted in June for the upcoming fiscal year, which generally starts July 1st. And as we get roughly halfway through the year, our fiscal plan, also known as the budget, sometimes requires some adjustments in order to finish the year, which would be through June 30th of 2022. So staff has contacted all of our departments and really forecasted the landscape as it looks through the end of June and is proposing some adjustments that'll be detailed by Lincoln here in a few moments. So with that, I'll let you take it away, Lincoln, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council and members of the community. I'd like to take some time and go through our mid-year budget amendment process. We presented this item to the Finance Subcommittee last Thursday and so to kick it off, looking at the general fund, if you'll notice that our adopted budget was right about balanced. If you recall, we had a $3,800 estimated net income. We've made some amendments to date this year, which have put expenditures over revenues and with the mid-year amendment process, that is expanding some. So to take this graphical representation, the adopted budget here shows the $4,000 net income. We had estimated and unassigned fund balance at the adopted budget of about $2.2 million at the end of the year. We have increased revenues under the current amended by $200,000 and we're bringing in another $300,000 in this proposed adjustment for an amended mid-year of $23.5 million. Expenditures have gone up about $500,000 since the adoption and our proposed amendment is just over a million, which brings it to $24.5 million in amended expenditures for a net income of just under $1 million net loss for the year at this amended budget. So to look at what makes up those amounts, the budget adjustments to date that the council has approved during the year, we had a roll forward of prior year purchase orders of about $5,000. The NAPA TV Council Chamber upgrades, the general fund piece of that was $15,000. The Polco National Community Survey, another 23. And then the Coastline Inspection Civil Engineering, there's been $500,000 put towards that. I would mention that that is in the Developer Projects Fund 105. It is in the General Fund for reporting purposes, but it's kind of a sub-general fund. The notable general fund expenditure increases for the mid-year budget. Here, we have insurance and fuel, those costs both going up a lot more than anticipated at the beginning of the year. As you know, fuel jumped a dollar in the course of this year. So we're looking at about just over $100,000 for increases in our insurance and fuel costs. As the pandemic is starting to come to a close and we're anticipating bringing on more city services, there's another 300, just over 300,000 of increases that are related to city services. We had some one-time costs that were COVID-19 pandemic-related of about $71,000 that had to do with getting City Hall prepared for reopening when that time comes. We also had other one-time costs that won't be recurring on an ongoing basis, about just over $150,000. There were some capital-related items of almost $70,000 and then increased legal costs of about $320,000 here, which is what gives us a little over a million. This is only the notable one. So more minor items are not included in this. We also experienced some general fund expenditure savings for personnel costs due primarily to temporary positions from turnover, staff turnover and whatnot, of $73,000. We have debt service cost savings of $21,000 for a total of $94,000 of expenditure savings. And our notable general fund revenue increases, our tax revenues are $128,000 above the current budget. However, I would note that we have another approximately $300,000 that we were made aware of last Thursday morning in a sales tax call that is expected to come in over. So the numbers that I'm reporting, the revenue should be another 300 above that. The operating revenues, we're looking at increases of about $35,000 and transfers in increasing by about $138,000 for things such as support services. So that totals the $300,000. So that that totals the 300,000 in revenue increases. The unassigned balance, fund balance, I mentioned that the adopted budget was 2.2 million. Our audited unassigned fund balance for fiscal year 21 came in at 3.8 million. Where we're at right now on our current budget, we would be at 2.9 million after funding reserves. And our proposed adjustment puts us right where we were at adoption at the 2.2 million. That includes funding the contingency reserve. At 3% of salaries expense, that would put us at 5 million or 20.5% of general fund expenditures. The target is 25%. We also are projected, based on the adopted budget, to fully fund the capital projects reserve. To the $2 million target, that would be funding that reserve at the tune of like 450,000. And no change to the economic development reserve, which is already at the $1 million target. Now, I would mention that increasing the reserve is not an expenditure. However, we do, we, when we, when we, when we establish it, it is funded out of unassigned fund balance. Which is why it does play a factor on that enough. For special revenue funds, the position has actually improved throughout the year. We went from 3.1 million of adopted net loss. To the current budget of negative 634,000. We are with this proposed adjustment, adding another 462,000 to it. Which puts it at 1.1 million net loss, but it's still 2 million better than what was adopted. The revenue increases are primarily from the ARPA funds recognition. That will occur upon appropriation by council. As well as reclass of 5 million from transfers in to intergovernmental. Revenues for the second CFD bond issuance. The expenditure increases are primarily from transfers to capital projects and transfers to the general fund. For capital projects funds, similar story to the special revenue funds. The adopted budget was for a net loss of $4 million. There's been no amendment so far, but we are expecting a better position by 1.5 million. Or an amended net loss of 2.6 million. The revenue increase is primarily from transfers in for capital projects and developer contributions in lieu. So that is where those increased revenues are coming from. And the expenditure increases are primarily from capital outlay and transfers out to enterprise funds for capital projects. The Water Enterprise Fund, I would mention that if you look at the 1920 and the 2021 actuals. It turned out a lot better than our budget estimates last year. They looked very similar to this year with a showing a large net loss. I would explain that depreciation for the water fund is 1.5 million. That will impact the investment in fixed assets, not the non-restricted. Net position. Also, there's intra-fund transfers of 1.5 million, so those stay within the water fund. So that also, it's it's kind of a net, not a net zero. And but there is a 1.6 million increase from the adopted budget for water purchases. And. That makes up all but 300,000 of the in increase of the net loss from the adopted to the current position. We have a similar story for wastewater enterprises, except the actuals are not quite as. Positive in the last two years, but again, you have to consider that. Their depreciation is 1.6 million, so again, that will not impact your unrestricted net position. And their intra-fund transfers total 2.5 million. So that is money that will remain within the wastewater enterprise fund. They have expenditure increases. The the largest item is a capital outlay addition of 328,000. And that basically makes up the difference between the the adopted net income and the amended net income. Or loss, I should say. For recycled water, you'll notice there was a large amount of activity in 2020, 2021. That was a result of transferring all of the capital assets into the Recycled Water Fund. Last year, we brought the council item for that. So now, as we move into 21, 22, it's more in line with the operations. And there will be a rate study done as we bring this fund up to full usage and speed. We're hoping that the the enterprise rate studies are all completed this fiscal year. So there was. A 69,000 loss in the adopted budget. Now we're looking at 97. So there was some improvement, but the the big change for the expenditures was a capital outlay addition. Of 250,000 with this adjustment. For the Internal Service Funds, our midyear expense adjustment in 78,000. For revised expense budget of 2.7 million. The increases are primarily dealing with DNI, the contract of 37,000. And a SaaS change for DNI, that's a software as a service. For 58,000, there was a piece of that same line item that was for Zoom transfers as well, so those kind of go hand in hand. Internal Service Funds, generally the goal is to fund them for what you are expending. And what you don't catch up with on the current year catches up on the following year. Which is why it's presented this way. With that, I'd like to turn it over for any questions that you may have.
Questions from councilmembers.
Vice Mayor Obadamos and I had the opportunity to see this slide earlier. Oh, there's Councilmember Joseph.
Yes, well, first of all, thank you for the report, and if we start with the general fund. The Coastland Engineering, in addition to it being in a in the developer fund. Usually those are all offset by developer contributions. Was that, I didn't see, I guess, all of the panels, but. Is that all offset by developer revenues?
Yeah, so. If that's on the slide, can you go to it? It's just easier to.
Bring the slide up, please. No.
So it is, there is actually 115% offset in revenue. So 250 of it had already been included in the. In the current budget, so we had to do the other 250 and then the 15% on the 500,000. And that just happened to be the way the council item was worded when it came through on the. On the Coastland Change Orders, there were two of them. So we had to reach out to. Request the the increases in the revenue for a little over half of that in this midyear. Which is a good portion of the 300 we had.
Okay, so somewhere we would see a revenue of 500 or 500 plus whatever 15% is.
Yes.
To offset the the 500 expense. Good. Then moving on to the other new expenses. A lot of the. I guess the one, the 300,000 in increased city services and, you know, insurance and fuel I get, you know, unfortunately. They have skyrocketed. The new city services, though. I guess it seems to me that we should try to decide at the beginning of the budget if we're going to increase services or not. I get a little worried at midyear when we make major, you know, service level shifts because. As you know, when you're putting the budget together, everybody's got to compete for the limited amount of resources, but when you do it at midyear. You know, sometimes you can. Get an enhancement that you might not have otherwise been able to pull off because there are other competing interests. So it worries me that we have such a huge increase in new services. I suppose it would help if we said, okay, that's what do those new services look like? Are they what we've always done? We just cut them out because of COVID and now we're putting it back or or what?
That that is a good portion of it. Let me share that. So we have Sheriff Contract Increase. Parks and Rec instructors, the July 4th event, some parks maintenance. And deferred maintenance for aquatics that are the primary increases there.
And then legal costs, if I recall the numbers, it was budgeted about 600 grand and now we're adding an extra 300. So. That that's just a concern because we may be spending, I mean, that's just a large amount and I think. Well, anytime we're getting large numbers, my first reaction is how do we manage those costs better? Because at the end of the day. It's okay that we we just happen to have had extra money through the audit and through some revenue savings, but. You know, I come from the old-fashioned world where your goal is to ultimately, you know, have your ongoing revenues covering your ongoing expenses. And my concern is we can't always rely on, you know, extra carryover. Unless we're using it for one-time capital expenses, so. Just as a, just to lay down a policy attitude that. It would help if we look at these in terms of our ongoing revenues matching our ongoing expenses. Because my preference would be to get to the point where the carryovers, this extra million dollars of carryover. That ought to be going towards one-time capital expenditures or buying a new financial software package or things like that. Because they're one-time costs and a one-time revenue. Legal services or increased city services and all that. It'd be great if we could say, all right, they're offset by all these new taxes we're talking about or other things so that. Going forward more sustainable financially. That that's kind of where I'm at.
I definitely understand where you're coming from, Councilmember Joseph. I I do have a little bit on line items as far as where those expenditures are stemming from. A lot of it has developed over the past couple of months. And had not been incorporated in the budget. We worked closely with Bill Ross and his group to determine what had not been budgeted to date. But that had been brought forward to council over the past couple of months. That will be done for the remainder of the year for legal services, for the city services. I I I think that most of the increases are in areas where. Like, you know, the building inspection services. There there is an offsetting revenue that goes along with that, so that 65 is offset. But the. The the cost of the utilities or the water, as I said, the water purchases are going up 1.6 million. For the water fund, the city's utilities bill therefore is also going up. Chemical costs, the supply chain type things that cause the chemical costs partially. To grow. And. You know, there's the request for the porta potties in the parks and then some tree services. That that make up the the bulk of of that. So there was those. And then in addition, the Sheriff Contract. Parks and Rec, July 4th and other maintenance type items. So while we're increasing city services, a lot of it is.
Back to where we used to be.
Yeah.
Okay, and then, of course, we have to remember to add 62 grand in for the extra legal that we just talked about this. Earlier this evening, although that's not the general fund, fortunately.
Yeah, that's correct, Councilmember Joseph. That'll actually be an additional appropriation from from the Measure A Fund that we'll we'll do as a part of the adopting resolution.
Right, well, those were, those were my highlights. As you can see, I. More concerned about the general fund than the other funds, but that is the way finance types look at the world, so good job otherwise.
Councilmember.
Yeah, so I'm just kind of look at this general fund legal cost too here. I'm just wondering, is is this in line with other cities of our size? Are we an anomaly? Or is it because stuff has happened this year and we should be expected? I'm trying to get a understanding of the jump here on this, because I think we've enjoyed in the past that. A lot of the legal expenditures that we had were actually, you know. Incurred by us but paid back by developers, so it sort of balanced out. Can I get your thoughts on that?
Sure, so it really depends on the the legal situation of any local government. Depending on the size of any litigation, potential litigation, types of things that you're needing to work on if you have large developments and things like that. To answer your point more directly, I did actually just go out on to the GFOA. And CSMFO discussion groups and posed that exact question, like what is the type of. Legal services per capita that you would expect to incur in a local government agency type situation? So I will hopefully have some results from that question in the coming weeks. Also, you know, there are some for like community development that are reimbursed. We have, I think, to date about 80,000 that has come in under that category. And we're budgeted for 130,000 this year, so that there is some offset to some of the the legal expenses that we incur.
Okay, second question regarding inflation. You know, I've never seen it like this in my adult life. It's happening across the board. And I think for many of us, it's going to be a new experience of how to manage that. And then, you know, the macro expectation is that it'll taper off sooner or later, probably not this year, but things are going up quickly. How are we budgeting for that? How are we going to address that?
Right, so we have looked at where we're at now through the end of the year to try and account for those. Cost increases through contract prices that we can get and what we're expecting. We will also be looking at that now as we begin our next year's budgeting process. I would note that the Fed's target inflation is 2%. Now, their metrics are slightly different than like the CPI that we use for most things at the city. So even in November, when when they were saying, oh, inflation is 6.5%. It was just over four for the Fed benchmark, so it was high, but it wasn't extremely high from where they're concerned. However, they have put out some information forecasting potentially two or more rate increases. In the coming year, 2022, that should have some sort of calming effect on the inflation. It's like putting the brakes on. And then there's also talk that if the supply chain loosens up and things start to flow like they did. Before everything locked up, that that could also have some easing impacts. Because really, if a store can't get an item, they're going to charge more for it because. because the demand becomes much higher than the supply. So if you can get that supply in, then the demand is met at a lower price. So there are multiple factors that play into, um, the inflationary pressures. Um, and it is a moving target. We do have some information from our, uh, tax consultants about, uh, impacts expected, uh, like for sales tax in the next year as to, uh, buying, uh, trends and whatnot.
Okay, thank you. No further questions.
Yeah, the questions from our council. Council ladies for public comment. So, uh, Councilmember Joseph, your head still up?
No, let's do public. I have some questions, but they're more focused towards the next year. So go ahead and let's have public comment.
And public comment, obviously.
I have, uh, we've received no written comments on this item. I have, uh, Beth Marcus. Go ahead, Beth.
I'm sorry, this is really a stupid question. I mean, you guys answer everything. But why does it cost seventy-one thousand dollars to open, uh, City Hall from COVID? What do those costs entail?
Um, well, I can let you know that we had to work on air purification within the building. We also implemented, uh, new, uh, doors, uh, that will allow us to buzz people in, as well as, uh, other like, uh, COVID-related expenditures that are like masks and and other, you know, PP and E type, uh, equipment.
Okay, thank you. So you're going to open the doors? I mean, I mean, the doors next week or the twenty-eighth will be open, open? Or you're going to buzz us in?
Uh, I'm happy to, I'm happy to answer that question. The, um, the expenses that were listed there, uh, under that COVID line item are really meant to create the current situation that we're in, including the new storefront glass that's up. We're still working on our plan for a soft reopening of the the brick and mortar City Hall. Our virtual City Hall has been, uh, up and running for nearly two years now. And all of our city services are available at our, our virtual City Hall. We don't have an exact date for, you know, a soft opening of our, our brick and mortar facility, but it will be coming, uh, in the near future. Still ironing out some, some of our security details. We had begun to to look at some of those plans before the Omicron, uh, surge that happened towards the end of the year and the first part of this year. And now as we see that surge, uh, you know, reclining, um, you know, we're redusting off those plans and, um, taking a look at, when we will, um, you know, reopen the brick and mortar City Hall.
Okay, thank you. I just can't wait till we can be at city council meetings again.
That's a, that's a fair point. Yeah, that's a fair point. We're, we're currently targeting April fifth as, uh, as that first hybrid meeting date. The, we, we will never have our city council meetings like they were before, or we're going to opture a, a hybrid, uh, a more refined version of, of what we're having here. So the public will have the opportunity to participate like they do now by Zoom or in person. Capacity constraints will still be in place. It won't be everybody allowed at City Hall. We're going to want to make sure that we're spaced out appropriately. But, um, you know, we're going to try and, uh, move forward with this hybrid version that allows both in-person participation and remote participation.
And if I may, part of that cost also was outfitting the council chambers for that hybrid meeting, uh, type setup.
Thank you. Sorry, it was a stupid question, but thank you.
No, it's good. Stupid. It was a good question.
Oh gee, thanks, Mark.
I wish I had asked it.
Yeah, me too.
Thank you, Beth. I have no other hands raised?
Hey, we'll close public comment, return to council for, for discussion.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, um, a couple of things going forward. First, uh, it'd be nice if we have an opportunity as a council and public comment as well to talk about what we would like to see in next year's budget. Over the course of the last few months, we've thrown out a few ideas, but it would be nice to have kind of a, uh, an open meeting to talk about things that we would like to see. So I'll throw that out. And then the second part is in terms of projecting the budget revenues and expenses and so forth. I think when Councilmember Ora talked about, uh, inflation, you know, I, I, I think we should be prudent and analyze next year from maybe three different perspectives. One, kind of a base budget of status quo. One in which it's kind of rosy because all of our new developments are looming, we're getting homes, we're getting warehouses, et cetera, et cetera. And then the third one, uh, in which we put on the brakes or the Feds put on the brakes and the, and the system crashes. Uh, we have a recession. Uh, I suppose that would be the doomed, uh, doomy gloomy approach. But, um, I'm impressed by the fact that over the years almost there's a better chance of a recession happening when the Fed puts on the brakes than there is in soft landings. And just so that we can try to get ahead of the curve to analyze the budget, maybe not in line item detail, but kind of big picture look. What would it look like if there was a national recession? What would it look like? If life is good and and all of our new stuff is happening? What would it look like if there was no real big change, good, bad or otherwise? I think that might be useful for the council to see and the public to see. So at least we have something to think about if the worst happens. Thank you.
I would mention that OpenGov does allow us to build different models and we could basically build three different reports. What does it look like this way, this way and this way? So that that is something that we could do.
I, I think that would be good for us.
I'm glad you brought that up, uh, Lincoln. The presentation that you saw tonight, although it was in a PowerPoint, many of the slides that you saw were actually screen clips from the OpenGov platform that we're using. And we built, um, we, we started to already populate our budget into this new platform. And part of what you're going to see as we roll out the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-two, twenty-three budget is an entirely different looking budget process, an entirely different looking budget. The, uh, ability to click on a screen and see different parts of a pie chart and different descriptions of revenues and expenses will be unlike anything to, to council and the public has experienced before in the past. You had to thumb through a document and look up a number or what have you. This would be much more interactive. So, um, certainly something exciting to look forward to.
Gazing the public around, this, this, uh, also, I think we all have to remember it's about an education process as well. City budgets are very complex, are complex and a household budget. So pieces of understanding, uh, you know, when you see negative numbers on it, what does that mean? We're broke, we have no money or does that mean, oh, well, you know, anticipating a cash flow coming in based on a budget? So I think, uh, it would be helpful to have that as well. Inflationary cycles that have come and gone, I think they talk about, uh, what we're, uh, experiencing, probably from a whole different, uh, basis. But, you know, it's about forty years ago, we went through something very similar. And the rates, uh, wow, well, very high compared to where they are now. And that has a, certainly has a rather chaotic effect on, uh, uh, economies, uh, even though there's mechanisms to try and bring that down, like more certainly to, uh, economics. I think that's what drives all the prices up as well. Supply chain is not, uh, recovered from COVID. And, uh, the, uh, that's only a manufacturing, but shipping of goods and being able to stock, uh, the, uh, consumer market with it. Gasoline is just going to pop up again. Situation in the, uh, Ukraine, but, uh, it's caused a lot of worry from the news I follow. And it has some effects on fuel prices as well. So things we all have, have to bother. Yeah. I like your idea of coming up with some scenarios on, here's some what ifs, of course, to all advantage. Uh, it impacts the city and it impacts our personal lives too. Things we need to be aware of as well. So I appreciate the presentation and the discussion this evening. Is there anything further to, uh, discuss on this? You have a resolution to adopt in the year budget?
The only thing I would make sure that we add mayor in this adopting resolution would be the additional expenditure appropriate. Sorry, the additional appropriation from Fund Three fifty, uh, maybe Mark, you remember the number.
Yeah. Okay, uh, I was gonna butt in if there are no other comments that I would be willing to make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number Twenty Twenty Two Next in Order, a resolution of the City Council of the City of American Canyon approving mid-year budget amendments to the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two budget, including an additional sixty-one thousand, six hundred dollars in, uh, Fund Three fifty.
A second.
Motion second, roll call please.
Councilmember Joseph?
Yes.
Councilmember Oro?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Abudalmas?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes, thank you, counsel. Moving on now to our agenda. I'd make no on initiative twenty dash zero zero four two A one coalition.
Uh, yes, Mayor, thank you. Um, this item is made at the request uh, in collaboration with the, um, League of California Cities, now, now known as, uh, Cal Cities. And there's part of the amended agenda the council was, uh, actually provided the actual initiative, uh, language. And, um, this is an initiative being put forth by the California Business Roundtable that would really severely restrict the way we can do business. Um, and, uh, you know, we don't employ, um, uh, specific legislative or, or policy folks to follow all the workings going on in, in Sacramento. We rely heavily on Cal Cities and their recommendations. Uh, and there is a recurring theme every two and every four years between certain political interests and other political interests. You know, that plays out on a statewide level. Uh, Cal Cities, uh, helps us, uh, stay engaged with that. And they're very alarmed at this proposed initiative. Uh, one of the real distinctions about this that is particularly alarming is the, um, requirements that, uh, any new increases in, in fees or, or city provided services costs or those sorts of things could only be done uh, up to a level that was the barely required minimum amount. And so, of course, it's not defined on what that means and that will always be subject to interpretation. But anytime the, the city would be accused of doing one thing more than was the minimum required amount, we would then be subject to a lot of potential litigation and or, uh, controversy. And so, uh, that standard is simply, uh, far too low and far too, um, really undefined to even be practical. And, um, you know, it's again a recurring cycle that occurs in, in Sacramento related to, you know, various political interests on both sides of the equation. So the Cal Cities has asked all of its member entities to join together with other partners that, uh, that they are bringing together to, uh, kind of push back on this initiative. Uh, and, uh, the request tonight is to adopt a, a resolution of, uh, opposing, uh, this initiative and joining the other, uh, four hundred and eighty-one or four hundred and eighty-two cities, uh, in California. Happy to answer any questions authority.
Questions? Seems like, uh, well, causes me great concern, I'm sure, that this all, we have these types of, uh, initiatives come forward. And, uh, I can't help but wonder what, what is to store behind. Councilmember Joseph?
Yes, I, I, I echo your concerns and having been in municipal government for probably more than forty years, even though I don't want to think it. But, uh, we have gone through these waves, uh, since nineteen seventy-three and Prop thirteen. And it's a little frustrating because I understand the concept that you don't want to pay high taxes or you don't want to pay for a lot of things. But, you know, it's unique that government seems to be the only function in which voters seem to have the, uh, ability to vote on whether or not to pay for things. I, I, I am not going to suggest that we operate so efficiently that there isn't a penny of waste i- in our operation. But by the same token, it's a safe bet that if we don't have the kind of resources that we need to maintain our parks and streets and, and so forth, that we will end up with the multimillion dollar deferred maintenance that we just learned about a couple of weeks ago. And some of that can be directly attributed to the fact that we've spent forty years basically keeping taxes down and, and keeping everything down and then wondering why we can't maintain our resource, our, our facilities. And, and there is a direct link to that. And so I guess it's important to support a resolution opposing this proposition because frankly enough is enough. I, I think our, our hands have been tied sufficiently with all the legislation in the past forty years that we aren't operating, you know, with much, you know, we're already tied down sufficiently that, that we, uh, don't need to have any more constraints because we're not doing well as with where we are right now. So I certainly would support, uh, a no on this initiative.
I would comment that, uh, pretty great if we just had enough money to do all the, the minimum on everything. But this, this seems to be a constant cycle of, uh, well, we're going to defer this because we can't cover it. I mean, you know, look at the states, the streets and the infrastructure in the city. The older parts of the city, you know, we're going to struggle, uh, just to keep up with it. And frankly, I think we're going to fall behind. Let's find, uh, more opportunity for, uh, for funding of that. So, you know, I, I think I have this, uh, discussion every now and then with, uh, people, uh, to talk, well, take water rates, for example. Do you think we are, all of us ought to pay for what we use? Because if we don't do that, then we are, uh, deferring that money to some, some, from somewhere else. No, it, it's, it, uh, it's that type of discussion we need to be very frank about. You know, there's certain levels of services that we all expect. And, uh, there's certainly should be, uh, support for that financially from all of us. Any other comment for the council? We have, uh, Councilmember for public comment? Any objections? Any public comment on this matter?
We have received no written comment on this matter. And there are no hands raised.
Okay. Again, I will close public comment, will return to council. What's the desired action?
I'll make, I'll, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number Twenty Twenty Two Next in Order, a resolution of the City Council of the City of American Canyon opposing Initiative Twenty One Dash Zero Zero Four Two A One, joining the no on Initiative Twenty One Dash Zero Zero Four Two A One Coalition.
Motion second. Motion second, roll call please.
Councilmember Joseph?
Yes.
Councilmember Oro?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Abudalmas?
Yes.
And Mayor Garcia?
Yes. Thank you, counsel. Moving now to management and staff, all the reports.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. We have, uh, three such reports tonight. Lincoln actually has a quick update for you as well as Jen and, and Ally, uh, also has an update for you.
Uh, since I'm on here, I'll start first, I guess.
Okay.
Good evening again. Uh, our transparency site, uh, went live today. So as we were discussing the item, I was going to share that if you go to the city website and go to the finance homepage and then click on financial reports, right here it says the ci- city transparency portal. You can click on that and it will bring you to our portal. We have our audited numbers for fiscal twenty-one and for our balance sheet and our income statement. We also have the information that was reported today on the mid-year budget adjustment. There's many views pre-built within here that you can choose. Uh, or if you say want to go into expenses, you can say, I want to see what that is by department. And, you know, there's lots of options. I'm going to create a tutorial and put it, uh, as a link.
Very good, yeah.
Finance page, uh, but, uh, just want to let you know it's, it's up and running. So you can run it right around.
Congratulations.
Ah, thank you.
I think, I think anything we can do to help people understand, uh, how the city budget works and, uh, how we arrive at, how we stay, uh, on solid ground financially would be helpful, yeah. Pretty good. I'll have to check that out.
I'll be spending hours playing with it, trust me.
Yeah, and I, and I was going to mention that you, you must have been listening to us, Lincoln. I know myself and Councilman, uh, Joseph, we're. Yeah, and and I was gonna mention that you you must have been listening to us, Lincoln. I know myself and Councilman, uh, Joseph, we're all talking about matrix, and to me, these are, these are perfect matrix. Uh, to to kind of like give us a, uh, thirty thousand-foot view of what's going on, so thank you.
Certainly.
Thank you. Only thing I'm gonna add, I'm gonna ask Jen if we can't get a a quicker link to that, uh, website from our landing page, so we don't have to search. A couple of links, uh, down that we can throw right on top of the the landing page soon, too.
Realistically, there may only be three or four people in the community that are that excited, and we can bookmark it ourselves, but, uh, I do appreciate the, uh, extra effort.
I think one of these things that, uh, strikes me, when you, when you see a graph that says your expenses exceed your income. And how do you explain the, what the ramifications of that are to the community in terms of how our budget process works? You know, that's that's probably gonna be a generate question there, I would think. But very good, thank you. Good to have this. This is a good tool to have. Thank you.
Thank you, Lincoln. Uh, move over to Jen, who also has an update.
Good evening, Mayor and Council and community members. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Perfect. I have, um, I'm Jen Kansenback, Cities Communications Manager. I have two brief updates for you this evening. First, we will host our annual State of the City on Wednesday, February twenty-third at six thirty P M. This event is going to be broadcast, um, live via our YouTube channel. And we have an exciting panel of presenters that will give an update on what to expect living, working, and playing in American Canyon this year. And we have a form available on our website for any questions from the community. And the website address with all of this information is cityofamericancanon.org slash state of the city, all spelled out. The second update that I have for you is regarding the kickoff of the National Community Survey, or the N C S. Last week, randomly selected American Canyon households began receiving their invitations in the mail. Um, to participate in the survey. The survey includes questions about quality of life, important characteristics of the city's community services, and priorities for the future. So for right now, um, the survey is only open to by invitation, and, um. We're asking that any community members that have received that invitation to not share it with others. We're gonna be opening the survey to the entire community on March seventh, and we'll be providing updates, um, as that date gets closer with the information. And, um. Later this spring, we will have all of the results from that survey, and of course, that'll be coming back to council, and we'll be sharing that with the community as well. Um, and that's all I have for you today, and if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
A a clarifying question. When you talk about it's by invitation only, that invitation is randomly generated, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
It's not like we're just inviting the people we think will say nice things about us.
No, and also, um, to clarify, this survey is actually being administered by, um. The National Research Center at Polco, which is the their, um. This is what they do, so we're not, the city didn't pick who's, you know, it's all scientifically mastered. So they're conducting the survey, not actually the city.
Just just wanted to make sure. It's all a random survey and and.
Yes.
Statistically valid and all that good stuff. Well, I'm excited. I'm looking forward to the results.
So what, uh, what do people do with the results?
Oh, well, the results, actually, part of the results that we'll get will be benchmarks with other, um, cities our size throughout the country, and. Um, ideally, the community would, or the council would set priorities around those results and.
Okay.
Meet our community's needs.
All right. Pretty straightforward. Vice Mayor Abudalmas, any comment?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, just along the lines of what Mark was asking. Why are we doing a select few first and then opening it up to the entire community? What's the logic there?
So the survey, as I said, it's conducted by National, um, by the National Research Center, and. I'm not the scientific person on this, but they they randomly, they use a, um. A formula that they use to select people randomly throughout the city population. So that they get a good broad coverage of the community. And so we keep it closed for the first few weeks to ensure that we can get a good data sample that they can use, so it's sta- statistically valid. Jason, I'm I'm here, I'm seeing you kind of want to say something. I think Jason can describe this better than me with his engineer mind.
Well, no, I you did a great job. I don't mean to suggest that, um. The statisticians at the National Community Survey have a process for, um, creating statistically valid surveys. Uh, what's going out now in these randomly selected households are actually two different things. Some are being mailed paper copies of the survey. Uh, with self-addressed envelopes to be filled out, and and residents will literally bubble in and then send the results back to Polco directly. Uh, other residents are being sent a postcard with a website address, and they can go on, um, and fill it out that way. Uh, that small sample size will be collected, and that's really what Polco considers statistically valid survey. What we wanted to do, though, was to to make sure everyone in American Canyon would eventually have the chance to provide their perspective, and so. Once Polco is done with their, uh, scientific survey, uh, we've now, we're now opening it up to to all residents, and so once, um, that date comes, which is March seventh. All residents of American Canyon will have an opportunity. At that point, Polco doesn't, um, consider that to be the same statistically valid, um, analysis, once it's opened up. To everybody, because they don't go through a a validation process on addresses or or whom, uh, whom the, uh. The survey, uh, person may be. You could have, for example, someone visiting your house, and they want to fill out the survey. They say, hey, fill out the survey, even though they don't live in American Canyon, for example, so. Um, th- those are some of the reasons why Polco does it that way. We will present the results, uh, back to council, uh, later this spring, maybe the first part of the summer, once they're done with their work. I think at that point, you know, they'll be happy to share exactly their purpose. The data will be broken down, so. Uh, the data that is collected in the statistically valid will be shared, and then the data that's in the more aggregate, much larger sample will be shared. It's probably unlikely there'll be big differences in those. Uh, in those answers, but, uh, they'll they'll be sharing both the the smaller data set and the and then the macro wide open data set. And the reasons why.
Thank you. That makes more sense.
Thank you, Jason.
Sure. Thank you, Jenna. That's all we had on that.
Okay.
And lastly, uh, Ally had a couple of updates, I believe.
Thanks, Jason. Um, so I just wanted to, um, just my notes over. Um, I just want to let everybody know that we are going to be canceling the upcoming Parks and Community Services Commission meeting that was scheduled on March tenth. And instead, we're going to be holding a joint meeting with the Parks and Community Services Commission and the Open Space Advisory Committee on March third. Um, I also wanted to inform you that, um, we have two exciting awards to announce. One is for our Parks and Community Services Commission. They have been awarded the twenty twenty-one California Association of Park and Recreation Commissioners and Board Members. For an Outstanding Commission. We will be accepting this award on March tenth at the upcoming C P R S conference that myself and three other commissioners will be attending. Also, the Seraktivist International has been awarded as one of C P R S's District One Community Service, um, members. Or, excuse me, groups. Myself and staff will be, um, attending, um, this, um, the seventies, the seventy-second Annual Awards of Installation Banquet on February twenty-sixth. With, um, two members of the group to accept this award. And then some community event updates. Um, don't forget that February is A C C P F's Heart Year Parks Month. Please visit various parks throughout our community to see all the beautiful heart art. Also, this month, in partnership with A C C P F, we are hosting a self-host search-and-solve game that can be found at Wetlands Edge Trail and Veterans Park. The new Ja- Napa Junction Family Resource Center is now open. Um, hours and additional information can be found in the City Manager's February Update or his newsletter. On February nineteenth, A C C P F will be hosting their coffee at the Wetlands from nine thirty A M to eleven A M. And on February twenty-sixth, the Friends of the American Canyon Library will be hosting a book donation event from eleven A M to two P M. And on March sixth, A C C P F will be hosting a community open house at the Boys and Girls Club from four to six P M. And on March twelfth, Malani's will be hosting their annual drive-through crowdfunding fundraiser from four thirty to six P M. Please feel free to visit our website and view our community event calendar to receive additional information. And so you don't miss out on all the great things that we have going on in American Canyon. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you for the report. Love it. We're busy, busy. Good.
That's all we had, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you, Ally.
All right, very good. Well, that would be, uh, ours for, uh, Mayor Council comments, three reports. We'll take up future agenda items after that. We have received, uh. Three reports from, uh, Councilmember Oro. Anything further to add to yours?
No, but I think I'm batting a thousand with written reports this year, so.
All right, good for you. You're you're a role model for us.
Yeah.
I was looking for the pictures, David. I haven't seen the pictures in this one.
Not this one. I try.
I know you do.
Councilmember Joseph, anything to add to yours?
When I, I I don't know if I'm batting a thousand or not. I I've been pretty consistent, and I almost never have pictures, so, uh, there you have it. Uh, but I do want to thank, uh, Ally for her presentation. And to remind everybody on behalf of Quanis, tonight is the deadline for the Early Bird Special. Go on our website, Amcan. Or, yeah, amcanquannys.org and buy tickets. Thank you.
Very good. Uh, Councilmember Washington?
Yeah, I'm not gonna mention my batting average for this year, but, um. But I'm nothing bad.
Well, I got, uh. I got a thousand in my oral results, put it that way. Uh. Couple things came up, uh, you know, now that the COVID season, we're starting to move back into, uh, in-person meetings. There are on the Governance Transparency Labor Relations Committee for Lake California Cities, now Cal Cities. Very distinct piece that, uh, went on for quite some time. Um. Brown Act and, uh, participation in public meetings. You know, we're doing this only as Zoom because we have an exemption. And the argument that came forward was, well, you know, this is working quite well. We're getting a lot of participation. And, uh, other cities are, uh, actually just moving to to get, uh, legislation going forward to incorporate some of what we're doing via Zoom. Uh, with the Brown Act, uh, modifications. Brown Act was put together before we had the capacity to do this. And if we had this at that time, we probably would have a different, uh, perspective on it. Uh, one thing came forward was, okay, we want everybody to have, uh, play on Zoom for meeting. You're live, your face is there all the time. That's kind of a trust factor some people have. Uh, how does the, uh, more communities are proposing a hybrid model? You know, uh. See, we've had some people who have, uh, drive, uh, two or three hours to get to other jurisdictions for a meeting to, and, uh, then have to come home, because they have to do it live. So issues like that were, uh, uh, a big part of the discussion as well. I think other organizations have other levels of having that, too. Uh. I'm thinking now, this is more beta vision of making California cities as well. So as this opens up, then we will, uh, have to pay close attention to that. I'm very pleased the fact that we are. Making an effort to have a hybrid type of meeting here in American Canyon. We certainly have got far more public participation, I think, uh, with our council meetings. It's a, it's a great benefit to the city and all of us. North Creek Watershed Association had a very excellent presentation on, uh, wetlands restoration, the area they're working on. And, uh, it's kind of coming to a, uh, more of a mutual agreement between, uh. Uh, environmental groups and, uh, the needs of local, uh, residents, transportation, for example. And the term they're beginning to use more is, uh, integrate the concept rather than mitigate it after you built it. Uh, but it's a, uh, the simple area, it also includes, uh, all the wetlands here off of, uh, American Canyon. This is the largest wetlands area left in all of, uh, the San Francisco Bay Area. So there's certainly a lot to be, uh, take care of there. One of us trying to include also, uh, not only just, uh, vehicle, but rail as well. Uh, some of the challenges engineering is the, uh, it's a mud flap. It's gonna be very expensive to put in, uh, uh, reinforced, uh. Base for all the, uh, the construction. Interesting story was told about back in the day, they had a, uh. I imagine it must have been steam locomotives. It was all going over the wetlands, ran off the crack, fell into the wetlands, and actually sank. Because of the nature of the, uh, the ground. Lastly, I'd like to comment on, uh, Wetland's edge, right? That is va- vastly improved. With the, uh, landscaping improvements, you know, the woodchips are there, the removal of the dead brush. Trimming back some of the trees that dump all the berries on the sidewalk. Uh, my compliments and appreciation to, uh, public work staff for doing that. It looks very nice. You know, hearing some very positive comments from people is, I do want to welcome that. And that would conclude my report. Now, as to future agendas.
Uh, excuse me, I don't know if Councilmember Abudalmas had any reports, but we didn't.
Oh, sorry, Vice Mayor Abudalmas.
I was gonna say.
I didn't see your face.
No, it's okay.
My apologies.
It's okay. I don't have anything to report anyways. I'm just kind of trying to take it easy for the next two weeks until this baby comes out.
Yeah, well, I, thank you.
Absolutely.
We can certainly appreciate that. Yes, this will be a joyous moment for you when that happens. Future agenda items?
Um, yes.
Uh, yes, okay, we have, uh. I think.
Well, let's Councilmember Washington go first.
Go forward first, yes.
Okay, thank you there, Mark. Um, regarding, um, community cats or feral cats, you know, I know. Hammy Wong and Rose, uh, Ma- Ma- Malanata, Ma- Malanato. Mentioned, uh, earlier during public, um, comment, uh, creating an ad hoc committee, which is something I brought up last, uh, city council meeting. Um, I'd be more than happy to nominate myself as the council representative, uh, for this committee. Uh, since it was something that I recommended, uh, last city council meeting, so I'd like to at least, uh, put that out there.
Well, I I don't object if Councilmember Washington wants to represent the council and meet with the citizens. Um, it, you know, may not necessarily be a formal ad hoc committee, but at least. Uh, a venue to, uh, craft some ideas for the upcoming budget, perhaps.
I don't object either. I I think, go for it. Um. We obviously have a feral cat situation or a community cat situation, and if you want to take the lead on that, I'm all about it.
I figure since, you know, I I did meet with several people last year around the same time, you know, uh. Kind of familiar with what's going on, and it, you know, it's the cat caper. I wouldn't do it.
I must, uh, had that experience when I first moved into American Canyon. Ended up with, uh, eleven kittens in my backyard, two, uh, two momos and, uh. Fortunately, I had a neighbor who was, uh, uh, loved cats, and she was able to find homes for for them. But part of it was, uh, put me in touch with this process with the, uh, Napa Humane found through a, uh. Being able to get a trap to to catch them all. But, yeah, it's important that we address that. Thank you for taking that up, Councilmember Washington. Uh, Councilmember Joseph?
Yes, a couple of items. Uh. A, in response to public comments earlier today, um, I do think maybe, uh, a report on code enforcement as it relates to. Um, the parking situation over Village at Vintage Ranch, as well as, uh, what's going on in Waterton. Um, it might be very useful to hear what's going on. I know S B nine is new state legislation that. That might be impacting the the housing situation over there, but but maybe an update on code enforcement, uh, also. Our new code enforcement officer's been around for a while and and maybe get some of her insight, so. I'd like to just schedule a a management report in the near future on that topic. Um, as well as on the parking thing, I am kind of curious about the parking permit. I know that can be a big headache, but hopefully we can solve it without going to that extreme, but a a good report would be great. Uh, also, maybe just a little clarification on on the sheriff's policy on high-speed chases, just to. Uh, kind of convey the the balancing act that goes into making those kinds of calls. Um, but also, the the one issue that would be more action-oriented. And I mentioned this to the city manager, uh, I I'd like to bring back some discussion on our urban limit line, uh, maybe at this point.